Testing one, two. We're just testing to make sure everything is working, and it is.
Not me.
Check, check.
Not me.
Hello? Welcome to today's planning commission meeting. Today is Thursday, November 13th, 2025, and we call this meeting to order at 9:02 a.m. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get verification of legal notice? Thank you. Nothing in the consent agenda. Before we take on our 9:05 item, we will do public input, where anyone from the public can speak on any item that is not on today's agenda. You'll be given three minutes. And just if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand if you're here in chambers and you wish to speak. Please come up to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. If there is no hands and no one here in the chambers, we'll just wait for two minutes till we take on our 9:05 item. Thank you.
Bless you.
All right, so I am showing a time of 9:05, and we'll take on our first item. Item 6A, Public Hearing Consideration of Recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to Adopt an Ordinance Amending Chapter 21, Articles 11 and 12 of the Lake County Zoning Ordin- of the Lake County Zoning Code to Implement General Plan Sixth Cycle Housing Element Policy, HE 58, pertaining to Affordable Housing.
Thank you, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. The housing element is a chapter of the Lake County General- The Housing Element is a chapter of the Lake County General Plan. It gets updated according to state law about every six or seven years. The current Lake County Housing Element was approved in 19 and expires in 2027. The state is understandably very, very interested in making sure that we accomplish some of the things that we say we're going to do in each housing element. And the draft ordinance that you have before you is one of those accomplishments. The Housing Element Implementation Task that was included in the Sixth Cycle Housing Element, which is the one that's still current right now, required us to add that housing projects with at least 20% of units that would be affordable to lower-income households that have been, where those sites have been previously identified into subsequent cycles or the six-year, six-to-seven-year period of the Housing Element as potential affordable housing sites, these will be done ministerially or if they're in a high-density zone. And so that, the places where the multifamily residential development can be placed is in the two-family and multifamily residential zoning districts, which are covered in Articles 11 and 12. And so the verbiage has been added or will be added through this ordinance into both of those chapters of our zoning code to allow for use by right of multifamily residential housing under these specific conditions. The, this is coming to the Planning Commission, although previous Planning Commission did review and recommend approval of the Sixth Cycle Housing Element, which this is a part of. So in effect, this is just enacting one of the implementation actions that a previous Planning Commission and the board and the state have already approved. I am happy to answer any questions that you have. My presentation is a brief due to our time constraints today.
Excuse me, I have a question. For statement, but last night at the BEVAC, the Big Valley area.
Committee of your council.
Thank you. We had a wonderful presentation of the HA.
Hape, Housing Action and Implementation Plan.
So many acronyms.
I know.
Lisa did a great job sharing that. And so I'm wondering, as I was listening to that last night, is this somehow going to be part of some of the requirements in that document? I think it was Section 5 talked about zoning and those kinds of things. Is this going to kind of fold in and be, be a part of that document?
Great question. Actually, since this is part of the already existing Housing Element, it is consistent with the Housing Action and Implementation Plan in that it lowers a governmental obstacle for multifamily residential development. So they are synchronized, though this will not be integrated into the Hape. It is part of the Housing Element, but the Hape and the Housing Element are naturally synchronized and complement each other. And in fact, the Housing Action and Implementation Plan or the Hape document will go a long way towards informing our next Seventh Cycle Housing Element, which we're getting prepared to start doing right now.
Okay, thank you. One more question. So you talk, this is about affordable housing. The apartment buildings that are next to the Kelseyville Post Office, are they considered affordable housing? And are they for low-income? Are there restrictions? Or is it just, if I'd like to rent an apartment, I can go? Who are those guys?
I'm pretty sure that that is, does qualify as low, lower-income housing, in which case you would have to qualify through your income.
Was that a federal project that, that put those apartments?
That was a few years ago, and I'd be happy to get that information for you, but I don't have it directly.
Okay, yeah, if, if you, if you could. And then just a little aside that sometimes when it's affordable housing and it's, it has a category for farmworkers, farmworkers in California are generally over the threshold because the threshold is a, is a, is a federal threshold and cost of living is higher in California. So I don't know whether that's an issue that we, the county, can, can kind of work on to help our, our folks that, that want to rent, but it's something that we in the ag community have run into that while it's wonderful to have those opportunities, the, they're above the qualification limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's some strong irony in that statement, isn't there?
I know, truly.
But getting back to this item
Sorry.
that we have before us.
I'm, I'm always hesitant to encourage development if it's not really necessary. So when you say there's, you're eliminating obstacles, what are those obstacles?
Sure, good question. Governmental obstacles is kind of a broad category, but it does include, in this particular instance, requiring a conditional use permit for multifamily residential development and a design review permit. Those things take time and money, and time and money is, is an obstacle towards housing development. However, this is limited. It's not like a free-for-all, come build here. It's limited in that it has to have been identified, the location where the housing would be developed has to have been identified in two previous housing elements. So for the last 12, 14 years as a potential affordable housing site. And the way those are determined kind of brings in a number of criteria, like your, your proximity to services, the ability for municipal water and sewer, how close are you to schools, things like that. And so that is a very limited number of parcels. I don't know offhand how many parcels would qualify for this one, but it's not, it's not just a free-for-all. But it would be in those locations that have been repeatedly and for a long term identified as ideal for building multifamily residential housing. It would lower the governmental requirements in that it would be a use by right, so they would go into the building permit process.
Okay, so along those questions, then, with, you said two previous cycles. What is the span between those cycles? And the reason for my question here, too, is I'm trying to get at when those, those parcels were identified, what if conditions have changed and perhaps some of those parcels are no longer adequate and/or there are other parcels that should be considered? And how do they get under the list to be identified to be eligible for this?
Well.
So the distance between those two cycles.
Yeah, the, the Housing Element life cycle is technically eight years. So this one was from 2019 to 2017. Things in Lake County don't really change all that much. So I am guessing, and this is just me surmising, that a location that was pretty close to services 15 years ago is probably still pretty close to services. The infrastructure is, is actually always a moving target because we, we do have restrictions or just based on our, our, on-the-ground systems for our infrastructure expansions. So, so that one may change by time. But overall, the conditions that identified a, a housing site as a great place for potential housing development has probably not changed that much in the last few cycles.
I guess I was just imagining that if the property owner had done something different with that parcel and it was no longer accessible.
If that had already been approved, then it's unlikely we'd be able to approve another housing development at that location. Yeah, that's one of those natural market-related, real-life instances. This is just changing it to open up possible options in the zoning ordinance.
And so my other question, and I'm sorry if I. My other question is just why this is being brought to us now? As I thought I read in the information that this is coming before us again fairly soon in just a few weeks.
Yes.
And why, what is critical or time-sensitive about the HE58 portion?
Certainly. Yeah, to put it in a little additional context regarding the timeline, I have been working with the State Housing and Community Development Department regarding a requirement that we do implement, I think there's about six or seven Housing Element Implementation Actions. And as we have been negotiating this timeline, given that we have a number of other ordinances that we're working on at this time, the, the state feels that if we can get this one across the line right now, the others are following shortly, but didn't have to be the whole enchilada. But this is the one that, that the state finds of highest priority. And that's why you're just seeing kind of like a one-off instead of a, a more thorough coverage in the, in an ordinance.
Thank you.
The first thought, of course, that came to my mind was what are our vacancy rates? Do we know that in Lake County?
That is in the Hape. I don't have that information right off.
And so what action do you need from us today on that?
Well, after we do the public hearing, I'm looking for a recommendation of approval.
Are there any further questions from the commission before we open up to public input? Okay, so we'll open public input for anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item. Now, you'll be given three minutes. I'll take people here in the chambers first, and then we'll look for hands in the Zoom room. And please state your first and last name.
Margot Cambara. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just have a few questions, maybe only one. How does this proposal affect paper parcels in the county's plan to deal with paper parcels? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is Steph allowed to answer the question?
Yes, I'd be happy to respond to that. The paper parcels are located mostly in the hills of Nice and Lucerne with a few little scatterings elsewhere.
Can you explain what a paper parcel?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. There are parcels that have a substandard older subdivision overlay on them, SOS, aptly named. It's a good acronym in this case because those parcels are mostly in the hills of Nice and Lucerne. They have unstable soils, very high slopes. I can promise you that this will not affect those at all because they're, those are zoned, they're not zoned for, for this. Nor have any of the SOS parcels been identified as parcels that would be ideal for multifamily residential or low-income housing in previous housing elements. So there will be no conflict.
Are you aware of anything that the county or any other entity is doing to solve the problem of paper parcels?
Well, I am so glad you asked. The, the, the Board of Supervisors did approve a management plan in 2015, but there haven't been a lot of opportunities to do what the properties, what, what the board thought would be great, which would be to, to use these parcels for a trail system up in the hills. As part of Lake County 2050, we are changing the general plan land use designation of all paper parcels from suburban reserve or R1 or whatever they are, RR right now, or something that would allow for housing development. We're changing all of those parcels to resource conservation or public facilities. One of the two general plan land use designations that does not allow for housing development. And the purpose of this is to help clarify out in the market that if you buy this parcel, it's not the good deal that you think it is that you can come park your RV here and retire or build a house on it. It's, it's, I think that it will, it should be very helpful in clarifying to the people that own these paper parcels that, that these are not available for development. And we are sending out a postcard to all property owners, notifying them of this anticipated change with Lake County 2050 to avoid, to just do everything that we can to clarify the situation of those paper parcels for those property owners or possibly any future property owners that would not understand what they're getting into.
So many questions come to mind, but I don't know if we want to have that discussion right now. Like, how much are they paying in taxes? You know, but I, I don't think that's a discussion.
If the commission would like to schedule a discussion on paper parcels, we can do that in the future. But, but yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with that one.
Public input is still open. I don't know if there's any hands in the Zoom room. All right, we'll take the caller on Zoom. And please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Oh, hi, this is Holly Harris in Clear Lake Oaks. I basically had four questions, so I don't know if I should ask them all or just wait for a response. But my first question was, when it says previously identified in the Housing Element as potential affordable housing sites for at least two update cycles, is this referring to the sites 1 through 34 that are in the, the Sixth Cycle Housing Element? I'm just curious because my next question kind of depended upon whether it referred to just those or something else.
I have not identified the particular parcels that would be appropriate for this.
Okay, so all of those main big ones in Site 1 through 34, you're not referring to that. It's like all parcels. Okay, then my second question is, how will, if there's not going to be any designer reviews or et cetera, how will they adhere to the general and local area plans? And then my next question is, how will they ensure that these 20% remain low-income and don't switch back over to regular market rate? And then my last one in specific is, I, I do have a problem with the part where it says, "or if they are located in a high-density zone." There are about 400 parcels in Lake County that are considered R3 or High Density Residential, and at least just over 50 of them are in Clear Lake Oaks. And the ones in Clear Lake Oaks, 31 of them are actually, they're, they're too small to be R3. They're actually as small as 0.1 acres. So you can't do the setbacks or anything. And so if this says, "or if they are located in a high-density zone," what happens to these basically 40 parcels down here that can't, that are also in the shoreline area of Scenic Combining District? What would happen with these? Would these still be a use by right with no discretionary permitting? Or can we remove that portion where it says, "or if they are located in a high-density zone"? Because obviously, they haven't been proven to be something that can be built by right as high-density. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That was a lot of questions, but great questions, I think. But I don't specifically have any answers for that.
Any multifamily residential development would still need to comply with the zoning district, which includes setbacks, the building code. So it is unlikely that someone would come in with a project on a tenth of an acre for a housing development project that, that would even pencil out as realistic. Additionally, those parcels have been recommended by the LAIPAC and approved in concept by the board to change from high-density housing into something else. So, so after Lake County 2050 is adopted, I don't know that those would qualify anyway. So I'm not overly concerned.
Thank you. Do we have any more hands in the Zoom room? Okay, anyone else in chambers wishes to speak on this item? All right, so we'll close public input and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I have one other quick question. Just wondering if, if under this change, if other things, and I think you may have answered this, but if other design or zoning, zoning characteristics in, in a particular area or that affect a particular parcel, if they apply such as like scenic corridor?
All zoning would apply.
Okay, thank you.
So action would be to recommend this item to the Board of Supervisors?
Correct.
Okay, so if anybody has a motion?
So I will move recommend. So I will move recommendation to, are we just approving it? Is that, that all?
Recommendation of approval.
Okay, the, the planning commission recommend approval of this item.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, we have three ayes and one no. Motion passes. All right, moving on to our second item, item 6B, our 910 AM public hearing, consideration of proposed major use permit, PL 25-59, UP 23-08, Wellness Ranch 3, dash Luis Martinez, and subsequent mitigated negative declaration IS 23-19 for approval of 107,120 square foot of outdoor canopy and 8,820 square foot of indoor canopy located at 6751 Ridge Road in Lakeport, California. The APN is 007-045-16. And we have staff.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. Mary Claybon, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. I'm going to take a moment and get our presentation prepared.
Thank you.
Is that the chair's screen?
Okay.
Yes?
Yes. Did you print that?
Yes, I did. Yeah.
Oh.
I got a copy. Do you want?
Are we talking about her comments?
No, just a, a copy of the, the previous items.
I did not, yeah. No, I got.
Yeah, if you guys are ready.
Okay. Great, thank you. Today, for your consideration, is a, an amendment for a major use permit. And the applicant, Luis Martinez, and his consultant, Richard Knoll, are present in chambers. And the agent has prepared a brief presentation following staff's presentation. As previously mentioned, this is a use permit amendment. The County of Lake has previously issued two minor use permits, MUP 1915 and MUP 2211, for cannabis cultivation operations at this location. The application Wellness Ranch 3 represents an amendment to the use permit for expansion of the cannabis canopy with facilities and combination of the two previously issued use permits. Under Article 60.33 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, the reapplication for amendment of permits. Any new permit may be amended by the granting of a new permit of the same type and following the same procedure for adoption of the original permit. Amendments to permits may include extensions of expiration periods, changes in use, structures, and conditions previously approved. However, any change in conditions must be approved by the review authority that had originally adopted such conditions. This is unique in the fact that these, all three of these uses combined would no longer be a minor use permit. The minor use permit determination body would be zoning administrator. However, with all of the uses combined, this would kick it up to a major use permit in that the planning commission would be the determination body, which is why we're here today. The permit request includes 107,120 square feet of outdoor commercial canopy, 8,820 square feet of indoor commercial cannabis canopy, and one Type 13 self-distribution transport only to allow a license with the Department of Cannabis Control for the operator to transport the cannabis that they have grown onsite to a licensed processing and distribution facility. The new construction includes a 2,500-square-foot barn and a 2,500 square-foot ADA compliant processing facility. The parcel size is approximately 106.47 acres. The site is located in Donovan Valley in unincorporated Lakeport. The closest community growth boundary is approximately 5.4 miles east of the project parcel. The zoning designations include, for the general plan designation, rural lands and base zoning, rural lands, with the full zoning being rural lands B5 waterway. And the B5 is a special lot density, which requires a minimum of five acres. This is within the Kelseyville Planning Area within Supervisory District 4. The topography of the site is mountainous and consists of the upper Donovan Valley and a side canyon. Elevations range from approximately 1,760 feet to 2,100 feet above sea level. There are two intermittent creeks extending through the site, one, one running north to south through the center, and the other parallel to Ridge Road. All setbacks from waterways have been identified, and the project includes avoidance by design of these water features. So it does meet those required setbacks from waterways. Historically, the land was a part of a cattle grazing ranch and was largely undeveloped, except for a partially built barn until 2017. A well was drilled in 2017, and the house and barn were completed in 2019. There is also a stock pond in the center of the site, and that was approved in construction for 2019, in 2019. The existing uses include, as previously mentioned, the existing residence, the septic system serving the residence, four groundwater wells, cultivation site 1, which is 10,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis canopy, cultivation site 2, which is an additional 10,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis canopy, cultivation site 3, which is an existing 2,400-square-foot indoor garden within the barn onsite. There are various existing farm storage, processing, and services facilities onsite, including water storage tanks, a hoop house for immature plant propagation, three 40-foot drying containers, those are shipping containers, one 40-foot storage container, one 8-by-12 pesticide fertilizer storage shed, an ADA-accessible restroom facility, security cameras and equipment, onsite vehicle circulation and parking areas, garbage storage bins, green waste composting soil storage areas. So this table represents the approved, proposed, and total square footage of the four cultivation sites. And with that, stage one facilities include expansion of cultivation site 2 for a total of 97,120 square feet of outdoor cannabis canopy, expansion of cultivation site 3 in two tiers of cannabis canopy for indoor cultivation, construction of a new 2,500-square-foot barn, additionally with two tiers of cultivation for a total of 4,500-square-foot cannabis canopy. 11, oh, I apologize, that was actually cultivation site 3, total of 4,320 square feet, and then within the new construction, 4,500 square feet. The 11 5,000-gallon water storage tanks, two 8-by-12 pesticide fertilizer storage sheds, a small solar-powered electrical system for security cameras and water pumps, an additional three shipping containers that are 40 feet long that would be added to the existing shipping containers for a total of seven shipping containers for temporary cannabis processing in accordance with the Lake County Ordinance 3135 for temporary cannabis processing shipping containers not to exceed three years of use. Following the three years of use, we'll move into the stage two facilities, which includes construction of a 20-foot, sorry, 25-feet-tall pre-engineered 2,500-square-foot ADA compliant processing facility to replace those seven shipping containers where processing would occur during stage one.
I have a quick question. So those seven units will be removed?
That is the ideal, that, that, that would happen in accordance with Ordinance 3135. It only allows three years of continued use. This new processing building would be equipped with roof-mounted solar, and one additional steel fiberglass or concrete water tank dedicated to fire suppression would be added for those facilities as well. The regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and state regulations. The Lake County General Plan goals and policies reviewed include land use, economic development, and water resources. The Kelseyville Area Plan goals and policies identified are there on the screen. I'm not going to read them all off to you, but I have a, kind of a synopsis of how the project has prepared, the project applicant has prepared materials supporting these goals and policies. The applicant has provided a hydrology report and drought management plan, which is attachment 6 to staff's report. They are required to adhere to the California State Water Resources Control Board for a cannabis general order with a cannabis cultivation policy, which requires all runoff to be retained onsite, mitigating off-site downstream drainage impacts. And a cultural resource assessment with intensive pedestrian surveys of the project site was prepared by Natural Investigations. This was dated March 2020, and they did, in fact, do full pedestrian surveys of all of the cultivation areas in question. The Lake County Zoning Ordinance was reviewed for Article 7 Rural Lands, which is the zoning district, Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted, which has all of the requirements for commercial cannabis cultivation, and Article 33, the waterway combining district. Notification of the project was sent via AB 52 tribal notification to the local tribes with Aboriginal territories within Lake County and surrounding areas. Tribal comments were received from the Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake Tribe and the Yocha Dehe Winton Nation. Both tribes did defer to Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and tribal consultation was not requested. All tribal comments are attachment 9 to staff's report. The project analysis for SEQA included a mitigated negative declaration as the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures that are incorporated. The public comment period occurred from July 23, 2025 through August 25, 2025. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, utilities, and wildfire. A point of interest for this project is that this project has actually changed scope several times. The major use permit application for expanding the cannabis cultivation areas and facilities and combining the existing uses under one major use permit was submitted in October of 2023. Agency comments provided early in the planning process from the Lakeport Fire Protection District required a revision to the project site plans, and that is attachment 1 to staff's report, and also required revisions to the property management plan, attachment 4, for implementation of Public Resource Code 4290 road standards, including adding a turnaround at the project site. A draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated. During the circulation period, staff was informed by the applicant that they had met with concerned neighbors and community members and were considering reducing the scope of their project. The applicant submitted documentation for the modified project scope. This included a reduction of the proposed outdoor canopy by an acre and an increase of the indoor canopy from 2,400 square feet to 8,820 square feet. A draft initial study was prepared and circulated for review following the scope revision, and public comment is attachment 10 to staff's report. Another point of interest for this project includes the stage one facilities for construction of the new 2,500-square-foot barn, featuring two levels of vertical growing racks, providing a total indoor cannabis canopy of 4,500 square feet. The canopy for each level is included in the overall calculation of the total indoor cannabis cultivation space within the facility. This is something that is unique to the Lake County cannabis program, and that this is the first project of its kind that is utilizing indoor facilities to do a tiering or a rack system to take advantage of the vertical space within the structure rather than building out. They are building up for their canopy. Staff had received phone call commentary not added to the record because it wasn't written in concern for this project and the farmland protection zone. Land of importance to local agricultural economy is determined by the Board of Supervisors. The areas in which the board determined were farmland of local importance were evaluated as the farmland protection zone, also listed as a commercial cannabis exclusion zone for outdoor cultivation. In these designated areas, commercial cannabis can only be grown indoors or in permanent greenhouse structures equipped with odor filtration systems. While this site is listed as importance on the State of California Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program, it has not been designated as farmland of local importance within the farmland protection zone by the Lake County Board of Supervisors. The closest boundary to the farmland protection zone is approximately 2.31 miles from the project parcel's closest lot line. Recommendations for this project include adopting mitigated negative declaration initial study IS 2319 for use permit PL 2559, also known as UP 2308, with the findings listed in the staff report. The major use permit recommendations for this project include approving use permit PL 2559 for UP 2308 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings listed in the staff report. And I'm available for any questions or comments you may have.
Just want to thank you for the presentation. Like always, you have some of the most detailed and pretty good information for all of us, and you make it really easy to digest. So thank you guys for your presentation today.
Thank you.
I'd just like to hear any comments from the public before discussion, that's all.
I believe we're going to follow up with a presentation from the applicant first.
Yes.
I just have one question. The farmland protection zone, you said it was designated by the state?
No, the farmland protection zone is designated by the Board of Supervisors, and the board determined that this site is not within the farmland protection zone. The farmland protection zone has commercial cannabis exclusion zones.
Right, right.
It limit to indoor or mixed light operations fully contained within greenhouses with odor filtration systems.
Okay, then I'm sorry. I thought the state had designated, and then the county superseded that designation.
So the county has the authority to determine what is considered farmland of local importance, while the FMMP is the state, and they determine the farmland of state importance. And this was determined local importance for the local authority to determine.
I see. Thank you. I see, thank you.
I guess I did have a question. So I was looking at some of the maps here on Google Maps, and it shows that there's some kind of like dam north of the project. And does that pose any potential issues with the cultivation sites or any concerns of flooding?
So no, at this time, it does not propose or pose any threats or issues for the cultivation sites, and the cultivation sites are appropriately sited with setbacks from any waterways.
Thank you.
So as you mentioned that, in some of the information, although you mentioned that a pond, it was not mentioned in the staff report, although it was mentioned in the resource planner's report, that, that it had not been mentioned, and that there was not a, a review of the pond and the wetlands area. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I can. The comments received from the resource planner were from 2023, I believe, with the first project scope. After the project scope had changed hands, the pond was incorporated as an existing use at the site, and that has been addressed within the SEQA initial study.
So there's, the proximity of any plantings is appropriate for the pond? And what about the, the wetlands, as was noted in this particular comment?
So there was an additional biological technical memorandum, and I can defer to the project consultant that can provide more clarification for that.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for the presentation.
Is this the presentation podium?
Yes.
Thank you. Shall I go ahead?
Yes, if you're ready to go.
Thank you. My name is Richard Knoll. Good morning to everyone. I am a land use entitlement consultant located here in Lakeport. And with, with me today is Mr. Louis Martinez. He actually will be coming up at some point and answer any questions that the commission may have. And also, I believe on Zoom this morning is Dr. Angie Dodd, North Point Consulting Group out of Arcata. She prepared and submitted the groundwater hydrology report and drought management plan. So if there are any questions regarding the data in that document, Angie will be able to, to respond. So I do want to thank the commission for your time and effort this morning, and also staff for their work on this project. I think it illustrates the commitment and, and work ethic of the Community Development Department here, and we certainly appreciate that. We do have a short PowerPoint presentation. I don't think we're going to go through a lot of it. We'll breeze through it quickly because the staff report was pretty comprehensive. But before we get into that, I just want to mention that, as, as indicated, this is the third use permit under consideration by the, by the county. The first two miners were approved by the zoning administrator, the director of the department. And facilities have been under operation here since 2021. And Mr. Martinez is a, a seasoned farmer, not just cannabis, but he's involved in other farming activities in other parts of the state. So we're, you know, an experienced individual here who I think has done a good job with the existing facilities and project. He understands county requirements and his obligations in terms of compliance, and I think has a solid record and has done a great job in terms of compliance, as illustrated by the, the annual assessment and reports that have been done. We're in agreement with the, the recommendations made by staff with respect to SEQA mitigation and also the, the use permit requirements. And so with that, we'll, we'll proceed to the first slide. This is just location, which we've, we've talked about. Next slide, please. Existing features. And by the way, there is a residence on this property. Mr. Martinez uses that, that residence when he's here. An interesting note, he is planning on moving his entire family here to Lakeport to become part of the Lakeport community, Lake County community. And I think it's an element of this project that we really want to see. I think it's important to the county to, to encourage folks that are involved in, in business to live here, to bring their family, raise their children, attend our schools, spend their disposable income here. So I, I think it's just a great example of, of how this, this product, if you will, can, can upgrade the county. So the next slide, please. This is the proposed project, I think has been explained pretty well by staff. I don't need to go through that, but we can come back to it if there are any questions. Next slide, please. Site plan summary. The site plan was prepared by Gregory Engineering Incorporated, civil engineer. The, the third bullet down addresses the Public Resources Code forty-two ninety fire access standards. After the submittal of the original site plan, we got comments from the Lakeport Fire District Chief about some issues that he had with the project. We met with him, and that resulted in some revisions to the site plan that we brought back to staff. They're now incorporated into the proposed site plan. The other thing that I think is important, which has also been mentioned, is that the proposed outdoor cultivation area has been reduced by a full acre, one acre of, of land to reduce the impacts to the neighbors. I think that's, that's pretty big. Next slide, please. Oh, let me, let me, we don't need to go back to that, but I do want to mention that the site plan does incorporate a vegetative buffer between the neighbor to the north and the cultivation, outdoor cultivation area. And you can see it actually on the site plan. I don't have a pointer. They don't allow laser pointers to come through the security, so. But you can see that kind of straight line. And we actually looked at various approaches with regard to that vegetative buffer, which are still options. A more natural planting between the property line or between the, the outdoor area and, and the residence was also looked at. But this is what is proposed on the site plan.
May I ask, what is the vegetative buffer vegetative? What, I mean, what's it going to be?
Trees, either fruit trees or oak trees, something that will provide a visual buffer between the cultivation area and that house to the north. That house is like six hundred feet away, something like that. And there's topography and, and a fairly dense tree cover already, but there is a, a bit of a gap. And so that's what this buffer is designed to do, is to create a visual separation.
So natural vegetation, I mean, not, not a stand of eucalyptus, right?
Uh, no, 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 no. You know, so, and, and there's some, there's still some options that could be employed to, to even increase that, that buffer if need be. You know, so one of the things about Mr. Martinez is he is very, very aware, cognizant of the, of the concerns of neighbors and, and has always illustrated and, and, you know, exhibited his desire to get along and, and to address issues that, that have been brought to him by neighbors or county. And I think that's, again, another trait that we want to encourage with cannabis farmers. Next slide is the operational characteristics, which have been discussed. Environmental setting has, has been discussed in the next slide. This is actually a photograph of the, of the proposed, you know, outdoor growth site on the hillside area, the slope, sort of in the background there. Let's see, zoning, next slide, zoning and land use consistency. In our project description, one of the things that I like to do is go through in some depth and address what I call the general use permit criteria that are established within the zoning ordinance. Article twenty-seven, I believe, is where they're found. You know, and so I, I tend to spend a lot of time looking at findings, factual information that support, you know, conformance with those general use permit criteria, because that's what we're talking about here. A, a, a major use permit for outdoor and indoor cannabis. And where there are lots of standards and, and requirements within the cannabis section of the zoning ordinance, there are also these general criteria that need to be satisfied. And, and so in addition to what staff has provided to the planning commission, there are additional findings within the project description that provide even more support for approval. Next slide, please. This is conformance with cannabis regulations. That, that bottom bullet is what I was just talking about there. I got a little ahead of myself. Next slide, slide, please. And, you know, this is the, again, what I was referring to in, in the project description, a lot of detail concerning these, these criteria. So we have that available. I don't know if that's provided to, to the planning commission or not, but, so we'll move on to the next slide. Another aspect of, of what I believe is important when considering these major use permits for cannabis is the, the economic and community benefits. And again, I try to get into some level of detail in presenting this information. And, you know, so this, this project, in my view, supports agricultural diversification and sustainable cultivation. It's a significant investment in Lake County, generates tax revenues, local employment, disposable income, payroll. It promotes county policies regarding agricultural tourism and economic revitalization. And there are a number of general plan policies, not including, you know, the Kelseyville Area Plan policies that are referenced in the staff report. There are a number of general plan, just broad policies that you can point to and, and, you know, provide support for those policies as well. So moving on to the next slide, this is just a list of, of the, the various documents that were provided to the county as part of the use permit application. There's a lot that goes into putting together a cannabis use permit. And so this is just kind of a partial list of, of what's been submitted. And finally, I think the last slide is, dun, da-da-da. Conclusion and request. We feel that we've submitted a comprehensive application and documentation to the, the county. The owner has a history of, of compliance. The project is consistent with county and state regulations, supports economic, environmental, and agricultural objectives, and we respectfully request that the planning commission approve the major use permit. And again, thank you for your consideration. And with that, I'll conclude, and we'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. I did have a quick question regarding the hydrology report. I mean, I don't have any concerns with the water usage because we can see those water courses running through, the location of the wells. They look, you know, like they're right next to where that water likes to run down, so I don't really see any issues with that part. But it was more about the use of the water for the expansion of the project. And then previously, I was looking at some of the reports and how it showed that it actually decreased over time. I don't know, those years might have been different weather, different climate, but you go from like a hundred to, I think it was like, one second here. I was just, I just had it open, to like seventy-five thousand gallons. Is that, was that just because of the weather?
It was raining.
Okay.
September and October of different years has been raining more or less.
Okay. Yes, it was a, yeah, it was a pretty big difference, so, I mean, I don't really see...
Also, I implemented techniques to decrease the use of, of water, the water use. You know, every time, every year, I'm, I'm improving my techniques to drop the, the use of the water.
Yeah, no, and that's good. I saw some of the implementations of the different strategies that you can use for that, and that's always good to see how you learn from the, from the previous years. And that's what, that's kind of what I was leaning to, leaning towards the, the drop in, in the use of water over the years. Could be the weather too, but also the, what you're implementing. And I think the fact that you had this, I think it was 2019 and 2022, there was two different permits when you started cultivating. But just being able to see that you have been a good steward. I've seen some of the public comments, you know, saying that you're a good neighbor, and that's always a good thing when we're reviewing these projects, that you're compatible with the neighborhood and, and take it into account, you know, the people that are in your area as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
You mentioned employees, how many do you expect to employ in your operation?
Two, two employees.
May I also respond to that question? I think the staff report indicates possibly four. I think that's, given the history of this operation, Mr. Martinez is, is a, is a good businessman and understands the, the need to maintain and reduce expenses. And I think that's fundamentally...
I'm gonna be living there, so I'm sure that it's gonna be two. Yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick, I have a quick question. I haven't said any word, but that's okay. I had, I very much enjoyed a visit to the site last week.
Thank you.
I can see that it was, the project is being laid out in a very thoughtful way, avoiding taking down trees, and I appreciate that. Just one stupid question, with the fire department, is there one of those universal locks on the gates of the fire department to get in?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yes.
Not locked.
Not locked, yeah.
I, I just want to interject, I'm never quite sure exactly when to declare that we had a site visit, but since Miley, since my fellow commissioner here just mentioned that, I, I did want to state that, that I attended a site visit also, and thank you very much for your hospitality while we were there and showing us around, it was very nice to meet you. So, again, Commissioner Miley and myself, along with staff members, Mary Claybon and Ryan from the Code Enforcement, went for a site visit, what was it, last week?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, yeah. So, and we visited the site and took around, looked around as far as where the grow sites would, would be, were presently in operation and then also would be placed, the additional grow sites. So what else did we look at? Oh, and then Mr. Martinez also shared with us his future plans of, of living there and bringing his family to the site. We also looked at or could see where the neighbor was located and where this screening would go. The properties were clean and well-maintained, and again, thank you for the visit.
Very welcome.
I have just a couple of questions on the road situation, it's always a conversation that we, we have is about road in, and, in and out. The road coming into the property is also the only road going out, is that correct? It's, it's just, there's no other exit if there was, if there were a fire, so something...
Are you referring to Ridge Road?
Yes.
Well...
And Highland Springs that it, that it comes into?
Highland Springs is, is two directions. Highland Springs continues over the hill to Mendocino County and, and to Lakeport. So, there are two directions there. Ridge Road actually does, I guess on paper or on, in theory, does extend over to Highway 175, I believe. That might be able to be confirmed. I don't know how accessible it is, and I'm not sure about Vernal Drive, if that connects somewhere, but there, there are some options.
The, the road coming out is, is not a striped road, so it doesn't appear that it's two lanes.
Again, Highland Springs Road?
It's not striped. Highland Springs Road, yeah, that's, that's part of the park.
Goes through the Highland Springs Recreation Area? Yeah, it's not, it's not striped.
It's not...
I mean, it's a, it's a county road.
Right.
It's, it's a county maintained road. I believe it is designated as a collector as part of the general plan, so it's a little more higher level in terms of the hierarchy of roadway systems. But as far as striping, I don't think it's striped at all from its intersection of Highway 29 all the way in.
Yeah, there is one place on Highland Springs Road that is very narrow. In fact, when I was on my way to the site visit, there was another vehicle coming down and seated the right way backed up so that I could get through, but that's, that's worth noting.
Yeah, my concern is that it's a very narrow road, I don't, I didn't get measure out, but I, I don't think it's, it's, what is it, 49, 42, whatever that number is. I, I don't see how that, that's compliant. And there's a, a one-way bridge, is that correct?
There, there is a relatively new bridge that the county built over...
Can you get closer to the line?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there is a bridge on, over a sort of a, what used to be a low-water crossing, there's still some low-water crossing area there. I mean, we're talking about a road that was an original stagecoach, if you will, access way into the county from Mendocino. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those situations where I think anyone who uses it wish it were, you know, better, had a higher level of improvement. But it is, you know, it is the access road for a number of folks who live and, and work out in that area, and has been, you know, deemed to be adequate by the county.
My concern, and we have talked about this any number of times, that the, the roads in and out to any establishment need to be compliant, and that the, the fire vehicles can really get in and out. There are some areas where there hairpin turns, and, you know, it's, as Miley mentioned, you know, they're placed, you can't, it's not really a two-lane road. So, a concern, just in general, I don't, I don't believe the operation has problems, but the in and out, and we, we've talked about this any number of times for many projects, it's a general concern that, that that, you know, because didn't the Mendocino Complex Fire come over the hill kind of close?
I don't know how close it came to this property, I think it was actually farther north, over the Hopland grade, and then down, down into the Lakeport area.
I think what we need to do is call attention to the fact that when we're approving these projects one by one, there's a collective effect that they're having on the roads. And, and we as a county, I don't know what department should address this, but one of us should be taking this on, I think. There's a place on the county road along Highland Creek, I'm sure you know where I'm talking about, it slides every year, and it's just one lane, and it scares me when I drive on it. It's very narrow and unstable, and as we increase development in those areas, I think that we as a county need to address those roads. And I think we, we had this with the High Val, some of the High Valley projects as well.
Yeah, many of the projects, and so, on this, on this road, are there, are there two other permitted grows?
Yes, there are more probably there.
And are they, are they both in operation?
I know one of them is, the smaller...
John Lake.
Yeah, Mr. John Lake on Vernal Drive, I don't know about the other one, though.
So, so to, to Ms. Field's point...
That might be more of a question for staff.
Right, yeah.
Actually, Maria Turner, Community Development Director, just wanted to assure the commission that their concerns about county maintained roads in general has been consistently conveyed to the board. So, the application that you have before you, according to our zoning code, requires access to county maintained roads. It does not require, but the purview for maintenance of those roads is with the county, not with the applicant.
Can you confirm that there are, there are two permitted grows? I, I know that, that in one of the reports it said, within three miles and five miles, I'm just asking, on, on that particular road, to, to the point of, you know, the increased traffic on a, on a road that is marginal at best for a lot of traffic?
Sure, I can answer that question. On that specific road, there is one approved project that has yet to operate. Utilizing the access road is...
Excuse me, that has yet to operate?
Has not operated. Okay. And then there is an additional location on Vernal Drive that does operate, however, they do have access through an alternate roadway as well.
Yeah, also, I think for this specific project, traffic, I mean, has been an issue in the past for, you know, different projects and how we evaluate the road conditions, but in the past, you know, like mentioned by the director, it doesn't really affect the project, and it's not really the applicant's job to fix those roads. They do have to assess them when they have employees traveling, but I think having two employees wouldn't generate sufficient traffic to cause issues, I believe. Looking at this specific project, I'm sure if it was something bigger, that we had, you know, 20 or 30 employees on that road, I think that would maybe be a little bit more concerning. But it is a good point, we have, you know, discussed it in the past, and we do need better roads, but that's, I think that's on the county's agenda for, for the future. But getting back to this project...
I just had one, one last, one last wonderment. There was a letter that was submitted in the comments that proposed some other agreements with, with neighbor, between neighbors for the project, and I wondered if, speak to that, or perhaps someone else might, just wondered about that.
My comment is, like, I'm making my neighbor to be comfortable with the project always, so we have made some agreements, so for him to be happy, for them to be happy. So I'm just following my word, keeping my word, and everything is gonna be fine. I'm, I'm just always telling him, if he has any concerns about anything, he can always talk to me as well. So, I agree with the comments, it's not a problem for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always nice to see neighbors getting along.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question in regard to the back to roads. First off, I'd like to make a statement that we are considering, to, to my chair here, we are considering a processing building also in this project, which I think changes the, the road issue a bit, but nonetheless, my question for that, for the applicant here is in regard to Ridge Road itself, is one of the questions that was brought up, is what are the intentions of, of the applicant's contribution to maintaining Ridge Road? As I understand, and, and I am confused on this, and this here will go back to a staff question as well, because in the report it says that Ridge Road is described as an unpaved county roadway maintained by nearby property owners. So I'm like back and forth here, it's like it's county, but the, the residents maintain the road, it's like, oh, okay. So, but, so what is your role in, in maintaining Ridge Road?
For me, I'm okay contributing any money as I have done in the past with my neighbor. My neighbor here took care of the, of the road and took payments from the neighbors, so I continue doing that, it's not a problem for me. In that case, I'm always participating and contributing to maintaining that road.
Right, and this is more or less an agreement between you and the neighbor, because this is not basically written...
It's never been an issue, no, it's good for everybody.
But I mean, this is not like part of the conditions of approval...
No, no.
...in this mix-up between county and...
But it's okay, for me to pay my share is always good, so it's not a problem, it's not gonna be a problem.
Thank you.
If it's in the conditions or not, it's gonna be the same.
So, so this is a private road, not a county road, because it's not county maintained, so it's either private or county?
That is the...
Well, that's what I'm not clear on, because it's not clearly stated in the, in our report, in our information.
If I may, Highland Springs Road is a...
Can we introduce my, my neighbor, so he can also talk about that?
We'll, we'll allow that when we open public comment.
Okay, yeah.
Highland Springs Road is the county maintained road, Ridge Road is an access road through the subdivision that would be responsibility of the operator and neighbors to maintain.
So Ridge Road is a private road that intersects or not, then feeds into a county road, okay.
So who owns...
Private road is the responsibility of those who live on that road.
Who owns Ridge Road?
Correct.
Property owners within the subdivision would be responsible for maintenance.
Okay.
Any further questions before we open up public input or public comment?
Not right yet.
All right, seeing none, I'll open public comment, members of the public, you're welcome to speak. Thank you for three minutes on this project, please state your first and last name for the record.
Tom Lasik, if I may indulge the, the commission, if you could go back to the presentation with the site plan on it, and while she's doing that, I can give a little bit of update on the road situation to make sure everyone understands. Donovan Valley is the Ridge Road, Vernal Drive, and Amber Ridge Court are the subdivision roads. Those are private subdivision roads where the county has what's called a public access easement. When the subdivision was originally offered for dedication in 1983, the county said, thank you very much, but we don't want it, we don't want the roads, but we want an access easement. So it's up to the residents to maintain it. I'm the only one with the backhoe that works, I'm the one that fills the potholes, I'm the one that does the work. People like Luis, my other neighbors, might chip in for diesel and things like that, but it's just for the grace of, yeah, that one there. And then as far as the lake, Chir Chavez, that's Graham Lake, it's a private lake, it's about a mile north of the property, it's the headwaters of Highland Creek. So all this flows into Highland Springs Reservoir and then on to, on to Clear Lake. Ridge Road is a one-way road in and out, there is one section that the, it's effectively a dead-end road because the slope is over 50%, and it's impassable, except in, like on horseback or ATV. Vernal Drive is a, is a connector loop, it does not exit out, it starts at the southern section of Ridge Road and comes back and connects to the northern section of Ridge Road. And there is no, Amber Ridge Court is a cul-de-sac, there is no other access, so the only way in and out is Ridge Road. So if I may, I support this, this project with the conditions that I emailed, Mr. Martinez has been, as you, as we've indicated, he's been very responsible. He's been very conscientious on his first Wellness 1, the micro, the minor use, it was invisible, I didn't have any issues. With Wellness 2, which is the square that's inside there, that was another minor use. And that was closer to my property line, my property lines are out the northwest, and he was very conscientious, he set it back so it wouldn't be visible, he's always been responsive to concerns, and I've had very few concerns, he's kept the place clean, he's, he's done a great job. When Wellness 3 was originally offered, there, I had quite a few concerns, and he and I sat down and we walked the land, and we came up with an alternative plan that protected the oaks. So you can see the reason it's sort of gerrymandered, it is to protect grows of oak trees that were not visible here on the site plan, but on aerial view, 100-foot, 300-year-old oaks would have been right in the middle of the cultivation site. So, we agreed to, we, we agreed to make some changes here, and then I've articulated in the conditions of use what he and I had agreed to verbally, not so much because of Luis, but because this goes with the land. but because this goes with the land. And if something happens to Luis, God forbid, or if he decides to move or has to sell, I want to make sure those same protections that he honored and I am willing to honor are also carry with the land, namely, the protection of the oak trees. The other one is this is farmland of local importance, it's not in the FPZ, but it is farmland of local importance, so I, I recommend in not putting any impermeable surfaces for like water tanks and such, so that the ground can be protected. He is going to be in grow bags, which is great, but I want to avoid tilling, especially around the drip line of oaks, because that damages the oaks. There is a pond and wetland and other features that were depicted in earlier site plans that somehow magically disappeared from the latest one, but with this configuration, they are, they are well outside the setback, except for where the hammerhead is, there is a, it says there are 100-square-foot secure compost area, that's right near the edge of the wetland, so I had recommended some best practices to make sure there's no runoff and things of that nature. The vegetative trees, he, he wants to put in fruit trees, which I support. Our concern is invasive species, and in particular, what a lot of growers try to do is plant oleander, which is highly toxic, it's invasive, and my wife has severe allergies. So we worked it out and we are requesting that those same conditions, which are typical conditions you would see normally in a, in a, in a, an MND, be applied in this case as well. We looked and we didn't really see those, and so we support it with those conditions. Finally, on the road, in the Wellness 1 report from years back, it was identified by the county that Highland Springs Road was not 4290 compliant, and that the owner of Wellness Ranch at that time, a gentleman named Tom Smith, would work with the county to fix that. The narrow section that you mentioned is only eight feet wide, the bridge is only 12 feet wide, it's got the turns, as you mentioned, there are no speed limit signs. I live there, Mr. Martinez is going to be living there. The Lake County Water Protection District earlier this year was concerned about the compatibility of the commercial traffic going through the park. I'm not asking Mr. Martinez to fix the road, but we, we are asking is to get safety signage in, because there is a conflict with parkgoers and drivers on that road because of all the blind curves. People are, I, I'm up to 17 people now that have had to pull out of ditches on Highland Springs Road. And it's because people come around a corner and they don't know how to drive on dirt roads and all the things of what it's like to live in a rural area, delivery drivers aren't familiar with it and they're in a hurry to get from one delivery to the next, and you've got horseback riders, you've got bicyclists, you've got pedestrians. I find it concerning that in one version, maybe even the latest version, it said Highland Springs Road isn't compatible with pedestrians and cyclists, but never mentioned that it's actually going through the regional park and that that dirt portion of Highland Springs Road is actually a bike trail, and, and it's often used. So for safety reasons, we implore the county and to make residents like myself and Mr. Martinez safer and safer for the parkgoers and everyone else. So again, he's been great, he's very responsible, and Ridge Road is not, if you've driven that road, you know it's only eight feet wide. I think we averaged 12 feet when we measured it from the green gate, it does have a Knox box at the green gate, I think he's required to put one in at, at his, at his gate as well. So that's great, he's got a signage and everything like that, but Ridge Road is a private road, not asking him to widen it, but he has agreed to, to contribute. I want any future owner to also understand that they too are going to be responsible for their share of maintaining the road. So this is not about Mr. Martinez, it's about what goes with the land and the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room? No hands in the Zoom room? Anyone else in chambers wishes to speak? All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or, or action.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Can I just make a couple comments? I, I know this is not in, in our purview necessarily, but can we recommend or request or ask if the county can, can look at that Highland Springs Road and maybe do some either striping or, or signs, or there, you know, there's no speed limit on posted, and just see if, if we could, we, the county, could make it a little more safe, could make it safer or just noticed more of what's, what's going on at that point? I do just want to emphasize there's a single-lane bridge on that, and, you know, I don't know that I can fix, but it's just, just another feature of the road.
Sure, commissioners, if I may, I actually pulled up a board memo for a project that had gone through the Planning Commission and through the appeal process with the board, and with that, there was discussion for Highland Springs Road. So I would like to add that into the record today, it was from the former Public Works Director, Scott DeLeon, and he had stated the status of Highland Springs Road from the Department of Public Works. Response provided to the Planning Commission indicates that Highland Springs Road is a county-maintained road up to the county line. While there are narrow sections, it is not classified as a single-lane road. There are some areas with limited visibility and caution is advised, especially on narrow, unpaved, mountainous roads. The Department of Public Works is not aware of a high rate of accidents on this road. Additionally, in discussions with the chief building official with 4290, there are considerations or exceptions that are an allowable use, these would be what have been coined pinch spots in where there would be one lane of travel available. This would include any bridges where a single vehicle would pass at a time where the oncoming traffic would wait for the additional vehicle to pass.
Can you say, what was the date on that, please?
This was a Planning Commission hearing, May 23rd, 2024.
I don't know if it's feasible, but that place there where the, it's sliding into the creek, that needs to be addressed, so a one-lane road like they have on Kelsey Creek, I believe, there's a stop sign, you have to wait to-
Yes.
I think that would be a good idea if that's feasible.
So the maintenance of Highland Springs Road is under the purview of the Department of Public Works Roads, and a request can be sent to that department, but it is out of the purview from the Community Development Department and the Planning Division.
I'd be glad to do it.
Okay, just, just one more question or wonderment. The, the additional stipulations or agreements that, between neighbors, can, can those be added to the, what's it called, the-
Conditions.
Conditions of approval? Because I, my wonderment is if, that I know that the, the permit goes with the land, and to the point that was made, if the landowner changes, then, you know, what is, the obligation of the new landowners, not necessarily to honor those, so-
Thank you.
-I just wonder if that, are, are they, are they important, or is that something that should be some sort of legal agreement between the, the landowners? I don't know where we fit in that, but since both of you appear to agree on some, some other things for ecological and purposes, it's just a wonderment, I don't, I don't know what-
Thank you, there should be a very clear delineation between, an agreement between property owners and the environmental assessment and proposed conditions and mitigations that are presented before you. The county does not have the authority to enforce third-party agreements. Our mitigations are drawn from our reports, the, the reports that are done, so they're drawn from the, the professionals, and also, we're required to have a clear nexus or a connection from our code to requirements that are in our conditions of approval. So we do not have an oak mitigation plan, this would not be an appropriate mechanism to attempt to ensure future landowners or, or live and operate or live on their property in a manner that is pleasing to their neighbors. The purpose of the use permit is to ensure that this specific project, for the life of the project, has lessened environmental, identified environmental impacts to less than significant. That is the extent of, of today's hearing.
All right, okay, then it sounds like that you guys gotta write it down and sign it between yourselves.
Well, I think that the project has been altered because of their discussion, so-
Additionally, should the use continue, though there is a, a selling of the land and a new landowner and a new operator, they would be required to operate within these conditions-
Oh, right.
-within that, that site plan, so.
Can I add one more thing?
There's a big giant question mark out there, so can-
Have we closed the public hearing?
I think public comment is, oh yeah, it was already closed, public comment is, is closed.
So perhaps I asked a question that needs a public comment or response. Can, can we, can we open it up?
Before we open it up, I think Michelle had a, a comment she'd like to make.
I was just gonna add to what Director Turner said, that many of the conditions being requested are also already covered under our grading ordinance in Chapter 30, related to oak drip lines, erosion, proximity to the watercourses and such resources, and then they're also already required as a part of Article 27 as well, things such as air quality, for example. So we did go through them and identify those that are already covered under regulations. There's another example they provide related to a lake and stream bed alteration agreement, that's already required for such activities, so just wanted to clarify that as well.
Thank you for that.
Well, I wanted to say that commissioners, all are, that's exactly what my mind went through as I took a look at this, and the, the way I evaluated it, I could see that they worked together and some changes were made in, in here. They're, they're solid changes, they're not, yeah, they might in the future argue about whether to plant eucalyptus trees or oleander, apples or pears, but that's not really something that we can decide, I don't think.
The processing of this particular project has been extended due to the ongoing discussions between property owners and the subsequent modifications that are now before you today.
Did you, would you like to request to open up?
Well-
We don't have to, unless if you want to get something.
Well, I see some giant, I, I need to say something out there, which I sort of opened up.
All right, so we'll, oh, go ahead and open up public, public input, and state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Richard Knoll again. I just want to convey to the Planning Commission, we did receive the August letter from Tom, and he had a number, or they had a number of points that were referenced in that letter. We reviewed it, we basically are, are pretty much fine with what he is suggesting, they are suggesting, the neighbors. And the, the, I guess the final point here regarding these, I mean, I could go through them and, and give you our position on them, but fundamentally, Mr. Martinez is fine with what has been suggested. What Mr. LaJic appears to be asking is to incorporate some of these conditions into the county-required conditions. We're fine with that as well. You know, my opinion after reviewing a number of these is that they're already covered by the existing conditions of approval. Some of them are not, for example, trenching around oak trees by hand, it's not covered by a condition of approval. It's a, an appropriate method when you're, when you're putting in, you know, a utility line of some type around an oak tree, is to hand trench, and there are other mitigations that you can take to, to resolve or to, to address that kind of thing. The county has chosen not to incorporate those into their conditions of approval, but if that were suggested, we'd be fine with that.
Staff did review all public input received and did not propose adding any into the conditions of approval. We are comfortable that subsequent grading permits and other required permits and standards cover these areas.
Certainly, thank you for the, those clarifications, and I know that we have to be careful not to try to micromanage everything that goes on. And again, it's certainly nice to see where neighbors are collaborating, we've been sitting up here and seen in the audience where that has been not at all the situation, so this is nice to see, so thank you for that.
What I'm hearing here is that, well, it's already covered-
You state your first and last name for the record.
Oh yeah, sorry about that.
We know who you are, but-
Yeah. Tom Lasik, and thank you for opening up for public comment again, I know it's not usual. And I do want to thank the, the CDD for the work they did on this, that they've been, they've reached out to us and been very cooperative. What I find confusing though is I say, "Well, it's already covered," well, there's no harm mentioning it twice, right? So if you want to help keep the peace, please honor, honor the, honor it in some way, say, you know, LSA agreement is a condition of use as already specified in this chapter and verse. Best practices for grading is already, you know, you know, tilling around oak trees as already mentioned, there's something so that it's not confusing to the future person that these are practices that are required, because what I found in the past is people don't realize what was committed to in the past, unless it's right there in front, and they don't have to dive through 50 volumes of, of articles and ordinances to find out, "Oh yeah, I was supposed to get an LSA for that," or, "Oh yeah, I shouldn't put a concrete pad down there," those types of things. Just have it part of the permit, if it's already covered, that makes it even easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've already advised the commission regarding enforcement of third-party agreements.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Much as it seems appropriate to somehow attach a condition that oleander may not be planted, I don't think that legally we can do that, so.
I'm Margot Cambara, neighbor to Wellness Ranch 3, and I just want to reiterate that Mr. Martinez has been very responsible, very conscientious. What I suggest to your commission is not frame this as a third-party agreement that needs county enforcement, we're talking about a discretionary use permit, a major use permit. So we're talking about what are the, and it's going with an MND, mitigated negative declaration. It has impacts, it has impacts to neighbors who live 20, I mean, sorry, 200 feet away? So please, honor the spirit of neighbors trying to work together. We're talking about permit conditions for a discretionary use. Please, help neighbors get along. You offer us no other alternative, we don't, we don't want to fight Mr. Martinez, but you are pushing us to fighting the permit if we don't have relief. Please, help preserve the peace and good community, thank you.
Commissioners-
Thank you for your comment.
Consideration, analysis, and approval of this permit today is, does not put you in a responsible position of creating neighbor dispute, that's out of your purview. Our mitigations have been derived from substantial evidence, our conditions are in general, we are comfortable and did not feel it was necessary to propose to this commission any amendments to the, to the proposed conditions of approval at this time.
I think Mr. Martinez is to be commended for working well with his neighbors and- and I'd like to proceed and make a motion if everybody's.
I still have questions.
Yeah, public comment is still open as well, so.
Lastly, if I could just provide a time check, we are losing Commissioners Aller in 15 minutes.
Okay, I'm still not feeling like I need to rush a decision, so need some time to talk and ask a few questions or make a few points, if you don't mind. So, I mean, I feel like as a planning commissioner, I do need to do my job, my due diligence here. So, did you have anything else before?
No, no.
Thank you. So, in regard to the topic that we're talking about, that we just reopened and closed? And did you close?
It's not closed yet.
What's that?
It's not closed yet.
Oh, okay.
I can take another look in the Zoom room, see if anyone wants to speak.
Why don't you do that first?
Okay, any more hands in the chambers, anyone wishes to speak? All right, we'll go ahead, no hands in the Zoom room, no one in chambers, we'll close public comment for this item.
Thank you. In regard, in regard to that last conversation that we reopened and closed, I think that there is, in regard to compatible land uses, there are considerations to be considered. Whereas I agree with the direction from Director Turner that it is not our job actually to negotiate neighbor likes and dislikes, but it is in the area of compatible land uses is an area of our jurisdiction, I believe.
Your commission is tasked to make the specific findings that are listed in the ordinance for each of these. I can read them for you if you would like a refresher as to what the findings are for a major use permit. And I don't think it quite phrases it in that respect as far as compatible land uses. I think there is an analysis of whether or not it fits the criteria, the proposed use fits the criteria of the proposed, of the anticipated uses for the general plan, area plan, and the zoning that it's permitted, that is applied to that area. So, I don't think it's a matter of, it isn't necessarily a matter of compatible uses between neighboring uses as to what it is essentially, that it's, it's whether or not the use itself that's proposed fits the overarching sort of plan for the area.
Okay, thank you. So, a couple, a couple of things that I just wanted to point out is in regard to the roads, again, just making a statement, county, that we do need to take a look at our road situation and the safety, again, as a planning commissioner, I do feel that it is our due diligence to make sure our community is safe. But, so we do need to, if we're going to approve development in locations where we have roads that are concerned, of a concern to the safety of the public, that does need to be addressed by this county, by Public Works, by, we do need to look at addressing that. In regard to water, that's something we haven't talked about here. And again, this is not particularly, this is kind of more of a statement and I guess things to look at in the future. We have, with this particular project, we have four new straws that have recently gone into the ground and this has been something that's been brought up as far as, as we've looked at projects like this or similar to this, that we don't have a firm grasp on the hydrology of our area. So, within the report, there are things, and perhaps this is just things that are put into the report, but there are statements that are made that just leave me a little bit uncomfortable, statements in the hydrology report like, "The project wells are not likely hydraulically connected to the creek." And if additional data becomes available for the project area, the recommendations and conclusions presented herein may be subject to change. So, I just wonder, I guess I, you know, want to put in that point. I know that we'll be, later we'll be coming before this body discussion about the changes to the upcoming, or an update to the cannabis ordinance and water will be a large topic of discussion. I just, you know, when we talk about nexus between water use and projects, you know, are we, are we keeping track of exactly how much water is there to support our community and the projects that we're approving? And what is that nexus between development? Let's see. Okay, so for this particular project, I was really happy to see that PG&E, that power is supplied with this project and they are looking at also doing solar. There's it. Oh, and then one of the things that's in the conditions of approval, and I'm sorry, this is just a little bit, perhaps minor, but yet important, if we put it in, if we put this or anything into the conditions of approval, as a planning commissioner, I would like to see us follow through on these items or not include them. And that is, one of the items is, is that this project should be reviewed by this planning commission on an annual basis. And that hasn't happened to date and I'd very much like to see that happen and/or again, as we move forward with the update of the cannabis ordinance, perhaps remove that if we're not actually going to follow through on that condition of approval. It just leaves me wondering what other conditions of approval may be in there that we're also not following through on. So, with that, I just wanted to make those few statements, just in helping between this particular project and any others that come before us and as we move towards the future in updating our cannabis ordinance. That's all I got, thank you.
Just one of the topics that you hit regarding the wells and their connection to the river. I think these are 250 to 300 feet deep, so that's groundwater and then a river would be, I don't think it would be connected to that. But the water table underneath is, it's different from surface water.
I get that, but I'm just going with comments that were made by the professionals in the hydrology report.
Are there any further questions from the commission?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I move the planning commission to find the potential impacts associated with major use permit, PL 2559, UP 2308, applied for by Wellness Ranch LLC, Luis Martinez, for the property located at 6751 Ridge Road, Lakeport, APN 00704516, can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration, IS 2319, and that the planning commission adopt initial study 2319 with the findings listed in the staff report dated November 13th, 2025.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, none, and the motion passes.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, PL 2559, UP 2309, applied for by the Wellness Ranch LLC, Luis Martinez, for the property located at 6751 Ridge Road, Lakeport, APN 00704516, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated November 13th, 2025.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, and the motion passes. Please note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. Thank you. Sure, yeah, we'll take a 10-minute break, we'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, then under that section, they can do that.
The tools are all right here, right? And then there's a manual right here.
See you later.
So, there's a C and a D.
Oh yeah, thank you. From like 1980, show that.
Yeah, but, yeah, I was surprised, I was like, of course, there's a continue. Major use permit, Miley will be here for that, though.
It goes into the drain, so we'll know exactly where it is. But it looks like it is going, it is going.
Okay, okay, and that's enough time. They'll even get the continuance, I think, in.
If it is there, we might have to figure out a way to attach it to the wall and totally skip over like the, I don't know if that'll charge any, because I might have mentioned something about.
Desire to want to help people individually.
I think that part's pretty irrelevant. But if that takes, the proposed like pilings in that area, we attach to the wall somehow?
Yeah.
Would that help with the initial study?
It'll help, yeah, but I won't know until like.
Yeah, until it gets like, yeah. Yeah, but they're gonna be sending me some info later today, so. Hopefully we get that figured out, because he wants his dog bill. Yeah.
Agreement that binds, that they can record as like an easement or something, I don't know. You think they'll appeal? You're making us jump. Not really. It demystifies, it rotates the ever-loving crap out of me. It's cold, is it suddenly cold?